Call this workshop, regular workshop meeting to order. We have a copy of the agenda that replaces here and I would entertain a motion to adopt the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
First order of business we're going to tend to this evening, we're going to do some recognition of our holiday home decorating contest. And I'm going to ask Dr. Washington, who is the council liaison to the environmental and appearance advisory committee, if you would please give us a little update as far as the names of the people and I'm going to turn it over to you right now.
I was about to say good morning, you can tell what kind of day I have, good evening, mayor and council and our staff and our citizens that are viewing us by G10. The Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee 2020 Home Holiday Decorating Awards is an annual event taken on by the Jacksonville Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee. Excuse me, committee. It is intended to encourage our citizens to show their community pride and their creativity during the months of October celebrating Halloween, November celebrating Thanksgiving, and the month of December celebrating Christmas respectfully. It is a friendly competition among our citizen neighbors and in 2020, it brought a lot of cheer to many individuals during these unprecedented times, particularly with COVID. Nominations were submitted on an online forum and the committee then voted on their favorites. For the outstanding home decorating for 2020, for the Halloween category, places of third, second, and first place winner were chosen and because there were so many entries, only seven houses were selected for this particular holiday celebration. So for the month of Halloween, third place went to 404 Wyndham Court, Nina Malum. Second place went to 129 Durbin Lane to Patrick and Margaret Benjamin. And first place went to 108 Fawn Trail to Raymond and Angela Dryer. So those were our winners for the Halloween competition. For the Christmas category, best cottage decoration was 312 Anne Street. That award went to Mr. George Kelly. Best classic cottage decoration, 100 Keller Court, was given to Timothy and Angela Slolam. Beautiful house. Best classic decoration went to 2614 Northwoods Drive and it went to actually a city member by the name of, city resident by the name of Charlie Brown. Not the victim, don't care, Charles loves Charlie Brown. Most welcoming decoration, 121 Westling Court went to the Bader family. The grizwoll worthy decoration, 1,107 Decatur Road went to Michelle Van Horn. That is definitely a grizwoll. Best use of space decoration, 121 Arthur Court went to Marissa Kelly. And rounding out the group, the most patriotic went to 105 Amistad Way, Jason and Corey Lagana. And those are our winners for the 2020 declarations award for the city of Jacksonville.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, I think we should note that Mr. Jackson is joining us just by audio this evening. And I heard and I'm sure the clerk heard, he voted as far as the adoption of the agenda in a positive way, but we need to kind of make sure we get him involved as far as discussions and make sure he's still connected since we can't see him like we did last time. Thank you, sir.
All right, so now we have our adoption of the minutes and the consent items. We have some minutes from the January 19th, 2021 regular meeting. And we have those five, I'm sorry, three consent items.
Move for the adoption of the minutes and the consent items.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Bittner, seconded by Councilman Jackson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, so. To our workshop topics for this evening. And then we're going to start off with a budget discussion for the FY22 budget and.
May I have three minutes to cover this? It's a good thing Anthony isn't up here.
Could we do that for Mr. Prince, Anthony? That would be, that'd be great.
I'll limit each staff member to three minutes, so here we go. Somebody's watching the clock. Hard to believe, but it is time for us to begin to work on our budget. Gail and the staff started back in November and we're now very close to the point where we're going to begin to have some workshop topics with you. Two of those topics are actually going to be covered this evening. What I'd like to do though, is show you the type of major topics that we need to be discussing. They all do not need to be funded in FY22. But these are challenges that the city is going to face over the next three to five years and they are significant financial challenges. Tonight, you're going to hear a report from Chad Su, who is our IT director. He's going to be talking about the AS400, that's the backbone of our computer system and the fact that in the years ahead, we're going to need to be replacing it. We're also going to hear a report from Anthony Prince regarding Jacksonville Station, which is going to be coming online this summer. And you will be discussing what type of financing the city will need to add to our budget in addition to the money we get from the federal and state level. Two weeks away, we would like to spend time talking about street paving. That's obviously a very high priority of yours. And we're going to be giving you a series of options that you should give us direction on as we're trying to build the budget. Also, we're going to be talking about recycling. Our eight-year, my time's almost over apparently. My eight, the, let's do that again. The eight-year contract that we have with Sunoco is coming to an end. And Sunoco has informed us that they're going to be charging us a rate and we need to be discussing what that impact is financially, especially given the fact that we dispose of roughly 2,500 tons of recycling material a year. In March, we hope to be able to bring to you the latest numbers on Jackham yet. The latest opinion or probable cost at the 80% showed that the project was right in line for approximately a $5 million project. And I'll remind you that roughly 700,000 of that will come from an insurance settlement. And fortunately, about a million of that is going to come from a grant. But still, we need to talk about funding the remainder before we go to bids. These are all shown as March the 2nd, they really won't occur on the same date, but here are some other topics that we need to be discussing. Due to overtime and other things, the fire department will be asking for four additional personnel. Also, due to cramped quarters and COVID-19 and so forth, we're looking at expanding Station Three, especially the sleeping quarters. Jacksonville Police Department would like to discuss with you something that's called a shot spotter. That is an electronic series of devices that will help you locate where a firearm is discharged. We'll also be discussing, again, not on March 2nd, general employee wages for the future. And of course, Jacksonville Police Department would like to add additional officers. Another very important thing is our record management CAD system. This is how we respond to and record all of the 911 calls, among other things that we record in the police department. It's going to be very expensive. Also, radio replacement plan. Always, we deal with health insurance and there is a variety of other departments that will be asking for additional positions. Again, this just gives you a heads up of the type of major discussions that we will be having. Our goal as always is to provide you with accurate information, get direction from you, and based upon that, find a way to adopt a budget that does not have a tax increase, if at all possible. Those are the topics. At this time, if you have no questions, I'd like to call Chad Su in to begin the first of the major topics, which is the IT AS400 overview. Chad, please. You can speak from here or there, which would you prefer?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. I appreciate you guys giving me the time tonight to kind of go over some of the things. I'd like to reintroduce you to the IT department first before we go into anything else. Right now, we have 14 budgeted positions, of which 12 are filled, we're working on filling the other two right now. But I wanted to let everyone know that right now, each employee does everything IT for this entire city. So our responsibility spans not just for the computer systems in front of you, but the networks behind, UPS, which is our power backup solutions, all the items and technology inside the police vehicles. So we kind of do all of that for us. Now, just because everyone kind of touches on a little bit of everything, we do have specialties in each area. And here's the team members listed here, so network and security, client server, GIS and SCADA. GIS is our geographic information systems and SCADA is our supervisory control and data acquisition systems, which kind of runs our power, excuse me, our water plant. Now, just because again, these are our specialty areas, they handle everything. So we are very, very busy all of the time. And so at some point in the near future, you may get a request from us to get a little more personnel to kind of help us be a little more efficient so that the city can help our citizens more efficiently. Currently, this is kind of a breakdown of what we support. Now, I don't want to go through all the minutia here, but understand that the biggest concern for us is our PSAP function, which is our public safety answering point, our dispatch. So that is our critical point, we support that aspect as well. The water plant, a very important piece, but I want to highlight a little bit about cybersecurity. Now, I know two years ago, there was a council workshop that discussed the need for cybersecurity analysts here in the city. Well, we've kind of gummed around that a little bit in the sense that we do have a really high focus on cybersecurity for the city. We value the data we have and we don't want it to be compromised. So just to give you a rough idea, just in 2020 alone, there were 11 public safety organizations, 23 government organizations, 13 healthcare, and 12 education organizations that were hit by some level of cyber threat, ransomware, viruses, worms, whatever it was, that crippled some of these areas. I'm sure you've heard of some of them as throughout the different channels. So what we did to kind of combat this, we hired a consulting firm to work as a security operations center for us, which eliminated the need for a full cybersecurity analyst on our payroll, but still gives us 24/7 coverage to make sure that we're secure and our data is secure. Now, also part of this, we have a couple of people on our team that are focused on cybersecurity. So Christie James and Dustin Sickel have been kind of running the whole cybersecurity piece of our network here, working in conjunction with our consultant. Now, we've also asked that another company come in called Angio, that will help us do penetration testing against our security operations center in order to confirm that we're really as safe as we think we are. The biggest thing I want to kind of put out there, and this is the test your knowledge moment, what's our biggest threat to cybersecurity? And just to let you know, it's us. We are our biggest threat. And the reason I say that is because hackers know that the best way into an organization is to get somebody that already holds a key, instead of trying to find the key. So they'll send emails, phishing attacks, all these different things to make you click on something or open an attachment in an email, which automatically allows them to take the keys from us and use it to do damage to our city. So part of the things you've seen, I don't know if you were aware of this, but Christie and Dustin put together a cybersecurity awareness month in October. And we sent it out to all of our city employees to kind of educate them on what to look out for in our emails and what to look out for as far as threats. And I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, we're trying our best to prevent these attacks from happening, but we need everyone's help to kind of get us there. So again, kind of an idea of how many threats we block on a daily basis. Now, this is a daily, so we block about 20,000 different types of hits every day, either via email, web transactions, or things trying to execute just behind the scenes. So we do a lot of work to keep ourselves, keep our city and our citizens safe. Having said that, moving on to Cary. Now, I know that a lot of you are aware that we put this thing together sometime, I guess about 10 years ago, if that's correct, to do backups of our systems. And the idea was that in case something happened to our main data centers here or public safety, we'd have a way to pull ourselves back. Well, it's kind of grown since then and now we've gotten to the point where we could literally stand up all of our city assets over in Cary. So for some reason, our two data centers here were compromised, for whatever reason, we could still function after a couple of hours, just stand it up. So the one piece that's missing, and this is kind of where we're going in here, so it took a while to get Cary where we're going, but the one piece that's still not there is our AS400 or the Jaxx400 system. Now, that currently is sitting onsite here in the city, but we'd like to move it to Cary, or at least one of them to Cary in order to have full redundancy in case of a disaster. So we're in the process of getting that now, we have some final tests to go through and once that's confirmed, we'll be able to pick it up and move it. So we should have it there by the end of March, thereby making Cary a full disaster recovery site. Now, I'd like to actually talk about cloud backups moving forward, but that's for another conversation. To give you a little idea about our system, and Dr. Wood have kind of touched on this earlier, the Navoline system was purchased here in 1995. Now, the AS400 itself was designed about 1988. So this system that we're currently running has been here for about, almost three decades now. It needs a little bit of an overhaul. The reason I say that is because you see all the different modules that are kind of connected to our main database, which is finance, planning, payroll, building permits. Some of these pieces are a little bit disconnected from the main system. As an example, we use ExecuTime today for our payroll and we use some of the HRS systems out of NeoGov. Well, these systems don't tie directly into our main system, so there's a little bit of double work and sometimes even triple work in order to get the information there. What we'd like to do is find something that can sit on top of the system we just bought in 2019, which is Power9. It's a very robust system and a good solid system, but we'd like to find a different piece of software to sit on top of it in order to get us the integrations that we're looking for. Integrations so that if an applicant were to apply in the city, their information is stored and if and when they were employed with the city, their information would flow all the way through to payroll and we wouldn't need to enter extra information. Or if someone was a citizen paying their water utility bills and they wanted to decide to work and do something with our recreation department, their information's already there, we don't have to type it in multiple times. And we can store all that information and make sure it's secure in one system. Now, the kind of the timeline to look at doing this, we'd like to start as soon as possible by creating an RFP to bring a consultant in to help us identify all of our business processes that are currently in the city and identify pain points and what, basically do a full needs analysis. Now, in talking with a couple of other municipalities that have done this in the past, the range is about $200,000 to $500,000 for a consulting person to come in and help us identify that. Now, this process is painstaking and could take up to about six months in order to gather all the information. So, but if we don't do this, then we wind up giving ourselves a little bit of a problem moving forward by not having identified everything we need, thereby selecting the correct system. Then after the consultant is hired and the needs analysis is done, we would start having them assist us in writing the RFP to actually do the ERP selection somewhere on FY23. Once we get that, they'll help us develop a solution on how to implement and the timelines of how to do this. And we run the systems completely parallel and make sure that the new system would function as designed without losing any of the previous functionality, so our citizens wouldn't see any gap in service. Now, the whole project would probably take about, about five years-ish at a total cost of approximately about $5 million. Now, I know that sounds like a pretty high price tag, but you have to consider the fact that the system we're currently running has lasted 30 years and this next system is expected to last just as long. So over that period of time, the return is actually, the cost is pretty insignificant when you think about the factor of time. That's actually all I had, I appreciate your time, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Counsel, you're probably like I am in that IT spells it. The backbone of our financial system, Chad talked about somebody filing for a job application and the ease of the information. But if you think about what we do, our entire water and sewer system, our roughly $40 million of our income a year operates off of this system. And that is the number one reason why we need to look at updating it. We have, you know, in the course of, every month, we send out 17,000 to 19,000 water and utility bills and this is a system that helps collect it. It helps bill it, it helps collect it. This is a big ticket, there's no two ways about that, it's a big ticket.
So this is replacing what they're using now?
For all practical purposes, it's a complete replacement. Chad, now help me out here because this is not my area. It is a replacement of the software side almost completely, is that right?
So the Navoline system, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with it at all, some people call it the green screen, but essentially that's the backbone of every system we have. It's our main data storage for our water billing, for planning purposes, for permitting, engineering, all of it goes through this one system. So yeah, the idea is to replace it to a more modern system that would allow us to actually have all integrated, everything's integrated together versus us having, right now, we have seven different manual, seven different interfaces that are developed specifically for outside systems to feed this core system. And what we'd like to do is actually just have one system that's completely integrated throughout the city so that data flows seamlessly throughout.
Like I asked, you were replacing the old system?
That's correct, sir, yes, sir.
Out the door. Going, not going to use it anymore?
Correct.
Could anybody use it? I mean, does it still have value?
At this time, once it's uninstalled or removed from our systems, it won't function anymore. So it's not, it's just a piece of software that sits on top of the hardware we already have in place.
Got you. Yeah, and mayor, I think that's the key. We're talking primarily here, cost of software. The hardware that we have may need to have some upgrades and help me again here, Chad, but the hardware system is not the expensive part. It's certainly not free. But it's the software packages that we would be looking to purchase.
Correct.
And that's why you start with a consultant to determine what are your real needs. Those would obviously be brought back to you to explain what the consultant is recommending from a business practice standpoint. And then you would, you would design with that consultant's assistant, assistance, you would design your software program that you're going to need and then move forward to actually purchase it.
So we wouldn't know what kind of hardware we would need until such time that the consult, the consult was over, correct?
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So we would be able to get specifications based on the system that was identified, once the RFPs go out, as far as the actual needs for the hardware. However, the hardware we have in place right now, we only purchased a couple of years ago, so it's still fairly reliable, actually it's very reliable and it's fairly robust. So it should be able to house no matter what, whatever software is purchased, but you're correct, sir, we won't know the full specifications that are necessary until an ERP system has been selected. Yes, sir.
How does this new system software comport with what we have in terms of our relationship with Cary? Can we run our system through Cary?
So once we find a system that will replace our current Navoline system, yes, sir. We'll be able to run it straight from Cary or here, depending on which, whether or not we lose functionality to our data centers.
Is Cary the sort of the bellwether of North Carolina in terms of computer systems or what?
It was more of an agreement that was formed and I don't know, I don't know the history on how that agreement was made, but they have allowed us space inside their data center as an inland source, since we do have a potential for hurricanes here, that could impact our normal businesses, so, normal business. So what we've done is agreed, made an agreement with them to house some of our information there so that we have a disaster recovery plan.
Comes with a cost, right?
That I don't know, I'd have to research that for you, sir.
No, they're allowing us to have the space, no charge. We are responsible, it's our equipment that's up there and on that equipment is our software. So we're paying for that equipment, we're paying for the software and the connectivity to there, the network. So they just are allowing us to use, to use space in their server room.
So if our system is hacked, we could just go up to Cary electronically and run our hard software through them?
Well, I'm going to hope that first one doesn't happen.
Understand.
If it does, yes, sir, we have the backups for all of our systems in Cary, so we could do a restore. Now, some data would or potentially could be lost in that process, but it would be very minimal compared to the damage that a hack could actually do to us.
Okay, I think again, we can't use their system to run our processes, but we can use that backup to restore our system. Is that what you're saying?
Right now, we're replicating there, so when we move, after we get everything up and running, so after March, we could, it's our equipment that's up there right now. So we could stand up our equipment at Cary and run using the previous night's backup.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that just a little bit further. The only thing Cary is allowing us to have is square footage.
Correct.
That's all. You know, if you'll recall, the, I think about the second year we worked together, we had a hurricane come through and y'all were very, very pointed to say, if that hurricane had been worse, what would have happened to our ability to operate? So you charged us with coming up with an ability to operate from inland. At that time, the IT director contacted a number of communities, Cary was one of them, and Cary said, hey, if what you need is square footage, we'll be happy to help you out. So what we have done over the last several years is move hardware and the software with all the connectivity to Cary. We're not operating on Cary's system at all. All we're doing is using, pick a number, 100 square feet in their computer room. Today, as Chad said, if something happened to our system right now and this, and today's work, February 2nd's work had not been backed up, we would lose that, but we could open up tomorrow morning, operating straight out of Cary. It is a full system for us to operate on, it's just in a, in a different geographic location. Once we do whatever we're going to do with the AS400 and the new software packages, we will be able to do the exact same thing up in Cary also. So again, I think we may have misled you, thinking that we are buying time or space on their computer system. No, it's just our computer system located in their square footage.
Is that still the optimum solution? Why not Unzul County incompatibility of systems or what?
No, if you recall, in our discussions with you, the main concern was, what if we have a catastrophic hurricane? You know, what if the last hurricane that was supposed to come in here as a four and fortunately only came in as a one? So what we, what you had directed us to do was not to look local. This wasn't worrying about, are we going to have a building flood? It was really, what if 140 mile an hour winds devastate this whole county? How are we going to be able to operate? And that's why we chose to move inland. So yes, it wasn't anything about incompatibility with the county, Unzul County, it was distance for safety.
And Chad mentioned though too, we'll look at cloud solutions because in some cases, instead of having a server with software on it in a physical location like here or Cary, you can get services in the cloud, you know, to provide. It's like, that's what's going on with our, our current 911 system. You know, we actually no longer house the 911 calling system. We used to house it here and now, under the new system with Next Gen, we're actually in the cloud with the necessary software. And the, and the advantage of that is, of course, they have multiple locations and all you have to be able to do is connect via the network. So that's another thing that we'll be looking at, is whether or not some of our future software will be operated in the cloud and physically in a server. So those are all different combinations that we will look at to see what's the most cost effective and the best solutions for us.
That was my next question, I was going to ask you that if we were to purchase this new system and when we're looking at 911 police and fire, will their current system integrate with this new one we're going to purchase or would we futuristically have to go back and look at possibly updating fire rescue and 911? and nine one one on top of this one?
Well, so to answer that question, it, the ERP system as a general statement is going to be more of a financial system. So it's enterprise resource planning.
Okay.
Now, police and fire would operate on it in a different way altogether. And I believe there's a topic coming up for their CAD and RMS system upgrade coming up so that they would not actually be integrated together. They aren't today either.
And nine one one is a, is a totally different system that just passes the call information into the CAD system. And, and that can, can happen via different connections. But as, as Dr. Woodruff pointed out, the police will talk about the need for updating their CAD and RMS system at a later meeting.
Okay. Do you know if there's any legislative monies that's earmarked from the federal levels coming down to the state levels to help with the infrastructure of computerizing, updating systems so that it's not a heavy burden to the municipalities themselves?
I do not at this time, but I'll be happy to look into that to see if there's something available.
Hey, Chad? Obviously, this is going to be a major financial discussion. Fortunately, it's not one that we will face in the coming budget other than deciding when do we begin this process. The initial process, as Chad said, is going to be to hire an outside team of consultants or one consulting firm to really come in and analyze everything we have and give recommendations. You will definitely be experts in the computer field by the time we get to the award of the recommendations from that consulting team.
Somewhat related, I guess. Are we finished paying the eight hundred megahertz system?
Uh, no, sir. The eight hundred megahertz system, I believe, has a one large payment in FY twenty one, which is this current fiscal year, one large payment in FY twenty two, and then one small payment or smaller payment in FY twenty three. Now, maybe you only have this year and next year, but I believe you have this year and two more years left.
Anybody else? Mr. Jackson?
Yes. Hey, Chad, can you explain briefly what cloud storage is?
Sure. So cloud storage is essentially us hiring an outside firm that has data centers around the world to basically house, store, secure our data. So what that allows for is we don't have to pay for the infrastructure anymore. We pay for only the things we need. And it gives you a certain amount of scalability so that you can upscale or downscale as your data grows and ebbs. It also gives us a really high level of redundancy in the sense that we don't have to maintain hardware anywhere. The providers do that for us. And there are a number of cloud-based providers that allow for government security. And we, it's, it's still, it's very, very, very secure in this. And again, we don't have to maintain it. It's twenty-four seven availability and you can get it from anywhere. So looking futuristically, I think it's something that could behoove the city to not have to house and, and maintain infrastructure in a data center. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Presenting.
Thank you very much. Well done.
So we're going to take a short break here and we'll be back with our Jacksonville station update and other information after our break. Next on the workshop agenda for tonight is the Jacksonville station update and Anthony Prince will be presenting that item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We lost our slides, Chad. It's amazing how much we depend on PowerPoint. Now I know where I am now. Again, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're going to spend some time with you talking about Jacksonville Station. It's been a little while since we've given an update. And if you've driven by there lately, there's been a lot of progress, real exciting progress, actually. And then, as Dr. Woodruff mentioned a few minutes ago, we're also going to give you an overview of what we feel the preliminary operating budget for that facility is going to be in fiscal twenty-two. Hopefully get some feedback and from guidance from you as we move towards budget adoption in May or June. So this is where we left off last time. It was nothing really but some puddings and we're able to pour concrete. Utilities are in. Steel started going up. Of course, this was in the days that it didn't used to rain all the time evidently. It's starting to look like a building. See right here is the, the platform area where the buses are actually going to pick up and drop off. And this is what it looks like today. So pretty much all of the trusses are in place. We're getting some of the cross bracing set in now. It looks like a building, at least the skeleton of a building. And I think what's impressive is that when you drive by, before you didn't really understand the scale of what the project was going to be, at least I didn't. But now that the steel is up, you can see how well the building's actually going to fit on the site. And the, the crown jewel of the facility is, is going up, well, was going up today. It's probably in place now, the clock tower. And they told me that the clock is actually coming in later this week. So it's not going to be hung this week, but it'll come in this week. So looking forward with the timeline, we're going to continue work on the exterior. That's going to proceed through probably the end of March. Of course, all of this is weather pending and materials pending, all of that. But once the exterior is dried in, of course, we'll move to the interior. That's probably going to occur between April, May timeframe. And then, right about that same period, we'll start to see some of the finishing touches on the exterior. So we'll start paving the parking lot and the bus circulation area, see some landscaping go inside, all that kind of stuff. So by late spring, early summer, it's going to start looking like a finished product. And we're hoping punch list will occur in August, giving us a potential move-in date somewhere around September. Now, this is all very recent information because the project did slip a little bit during our last project update last Thursday. So that's where there might be a little bit of information or a little bit of difference in the schedule from what I told you last time. Before we develop the budget, we, we definitely wanted to take a look at what are capabilities and what is appropriate as far as an operating plan. So what you're seeing here, Monday through Friday, seven AM through six PM, that's when the building is actually going to be open and staffed and available to the public. Okay? The facility is going to basically operate twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. A lot of the pickups and drop-offs may occur, you know, well, they will occur after hours and, and on the weekends. And we've provided exterior lighting and surveillance equipment, things of that nature to make it safe and comfortable. But during the majority of the time where we have customer service needs and where we welcome people to our community from Amtrak and Greyhound, this period will accommodate a majority, like I said, of that traffic. The intent here is to set something reasonable to start with and potentially expand if need be. We didn't want to go overboard and oversell ourselves with, you know, extended operating hours and then have to retract because either there wasn't a need or we couldn't necessarily afford it. One of the things that we've talked to Council about before is that as we begin moving into the facility, we'd also like to evolve our customer service approach. So right now, a majority of our customer service is handled by phone call or through the, through the web. Okay? What we call our one call center. And those services are currently provided by Onslow United Transit under contract. And it's been that way since two thousand and seven when the, when the system started. But once we start to move into this building and we actually have people at the ticket booth there, that's actually what it's going to look like. The thought is, is that this is a city building, this is a city service. We would really like for city employees to be the customer service representatives there. So the, the intent would be to transition from a contracted service today to an in-house customer service operation in the future. And of course, now that we have a facility, we will have more face-to-face interaction with our customers than we do today, which is primarily phone and web. Anytime you build a building, you got to keep it neat and tidy, so we'll have custodial services as well. Some of the budget assumptions, the, the budget was developed from July one through June thirty, just as we do with any other operation. The reasoning there was because we don't really know what the acceptance date is going to be. So it's, it's been adjusted over time from the July timeframe, late June, early July timeframe, to what we see now as somewhat August and September. But the good thing here is that by budgeting from July one to June thirty, full year operation, that gives us a really conservative approach to what the actual incurred costs are going to be in fiscal twenty-two. The other reason is as well, is if we move to the in-house customer service approach, our current contract with outs ends on July first. So even though we're, we're unlikely to be in the building, if we choose to go that direction, we will have to be prepared to offer that, that customer service between July one and when we move in. So we'll have to plan for that financially. The, the goal would be to have three and a half customer service specialists that provides us the level of coverage that we would want to, to staff the building, three full-time positions, one half-time, non-benefited employee, and then one custodian. So the one custodian would not give us a hundred percent coverage, but would give us very reasonable coverage, in my opinion, similar to what we have here at City Hall. Utilities and contracts, all of those figures were based upon City Hall because that's the building that we felt closest resembled the way that this facility is actually going to operate when it's done. Some of the unknowns, I mentioned to you about the acceptance date. That's sliding around right now. As the construction progresses, that will come more into focus and we'll be able to hone in on that date. One of the things that's kind of up in the air right now, but will also become more clear in the near future are warranties and service agreements that come with the construction of the facility. So the building will have a warranty, but also some of the major components. And Mr. Warden, you could probably speak to this, that your HVAC, your generator, your other main systems will typically have a warranty, but then they also may come with a service agreement, either one or two or more years, as part of that initial install contract. We just haven't gotten all the submittals on that equipment, so we don't know exactly what those are yet. But the estimates are based again on what we see as actual cost from, from City Hall. We'll talk about revenue generation in, in just a second, but then this is a new facility, so there will be unanticipated expenses. The one thing that I can tell you is, is that we're building some unanticipated into the budget. But then there is also flexibility within our existing grants. Like we mentioned to you, the CARES grant just a few minutes ago, as well as prior year operating grants for us to be able to fund anything that just comes up out of nowhere. So I feel that we have a good buffer there and we have good flexibility to, to account for anything that, that pops up. So estimated expenditures, and as you recall, this is a range just like you would see with any other department. This is basically our budget summary spreadsheet format. Personnel is the lion's share of the cost, followed by utilities and maintenance, insurance, contracts, and supplies. So total is approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Sir?
What happened to revenue generation? Did I miss that?
Revenue is next, sir. Yep, we're going to come, why don't we just go to, go to that? Because that's the big question, right? We know, if we know what the expenditures are, the question is, how are we going to cover those? Now, while there's a lot of uncertainty with those items that I listed on a previous slide, one thing that we know for certain is that FTA is going to cover a significant portion of the operating cost. And as you can see here, of that three hundred and twenty thousand, it'd be two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. We also have other sources of revenue, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a second, that will help to reduce the local match for those federal funds. And that would leave the general fund at approximately thirty-one and change, which is, by my math, a little bit less than ten percent of the total operating cost for the facility. So, but looking forward into other revenue sources, the good news here is, is that we're looking at it very conservatively. So I mentioned to you, I don't know, several months ago during one of these updates, that the goal was to get the, the general fund down to as close to zero as we could. I don't think that we're going to get there, but we have the opportunity to get pretty close. And the reason is because of these revenue generating sources. Outs and the MPO, because they are going to be located in the facility, they are going to pay us rent. Okay? And the amounts that are shown there are based upon the pro-rata share of the building that they consume, based upon the total operating budget that we have estimated. So those numbers may change a little bit, but I think that they're going to remain substantially this, in that, I guess, proportion or amount. With regard to Amtrak and Greyhound, Mr. Thomas asked the question last time we spoke about Jacksonville Station, well, are they going to come? And the answer is yes. So I didn't give you a very good answer last time, but since I've been able to talk with Amtrak and Greyhound, they're very eager to move their operations to the facility. And we will start contract negotiations soon as to how much, you know, how much of the facility they're going to use, what types of services are they looking for, and in turn, how much are they going to compensate us? So, and as those agreements come forward, we will certainly process those.
What do you use as a base to negotiate? Do you have experience with other similar operations?
Well, the good thing is, is that we have lots of friends all over North Carolina that have similar arrangements. So we do have budget numbers, but because they're just based upon feedback from our peers and not actually from the, you know, a proposal from Amtrak, we didn't include them in here, again, looking very conservatively. We feel, let me go back to this. We feel based upon feedback from our peers that Amtrak is probably going to be around ten thousand a year, and Greyhound is probably going to be about half of that. Now, that's just my gut feel at this point based upon other information, but we'll, we'll see when the contracts come in. And there is a, a process of negotiation that we can come, that we can go through. They want to be here, so we don't necessarily have to take their first offer. We can come to a more palatable solution that meets everyone's needs. Yes, ma'am?
I had a question for you, Mr. Prince.
Sure.
Have you presented your findings out to Camp Lejeune? Because I am just wondering, now that we're going to have this type of transportation systems, and I'm thinking about the four different military installations that we have here, that if there was some type of contract with, with Amtrak or with Greyhound, being able to have access to the base and to pick up and basically bring the military personnel back to this particular center, that would help in cutting down their expenses. And when these, when these particular servicemen and women are coming to Jacksonville, let's just say after hours, because a contractor or some type of an agreement plan is set in place in anticipating their arrival, they can have that hero's welcome.
Right.
Coming in here. And so being able to have a central location or locations that the military men and women can actually use on Camp Lejeune Courthouse Bay in terms of trying to find transportation, if the transportation is already set up, pretty much like with our transportation buses going out there, I believe that will be a vital service to connect with the military to the city of Jacksonville. And there may be funding. And there may be funding from the United States government to support this possibly.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and it's something that we'll definitely have to explore. The feedback that we constantly get from Camp Lejeune is that they very much appreciate the service that we provide to them today, and that this is something that's in need. Because we see what happens when Amtrak, Greyhound drops the Marines off on Onslow Drive or down here, you know, they kind of find themselves searching for their way in the world until somebody comes and kind of locates them. So two things there. I think we'll have to look at some service arrangements. So potentially having a special service for us to be able to take those Marines onto the base, once they're dropped off by Amtrak and Greyhound. But then also, maybe an arrangement where, because they have special charters that don't necessarily come in on a regular schedule, depending on what their training needs are and what their, you know, their travel needs are. So if some of those were to come either before or after our operating hours, we could provide them some special treatment, you know, if they're willing to help offset the cost. But all that being said, I think that's a good concept, is potentially adding the Marine Corps as another revenue source to help lower the general fund. Did I, did I capture that? Yes, sir.
Did I hear you say in one of your other presentations that perhaps the USO might want to have a presence here? Is that, have you done any further exploring on that?
Well, we haven't done any more, any further exploring on that. Just to be frank with you, we did contact the USO. It was about two years ago, and the reception was pretty lukewarm, honestly. I think the feel is, is that they were pretty far extended, and I don't want to speak for them, I'm just giving you my impression. But I think they're pretty far extended with the obligations that they have at the airport, you know, because they have to cover a lot of hours there. But the opportunity is always still on the table. We can reengage with them at any time. And in fact, if you recall the design, we have a special set-aside area, which we're calling the Military Hospitality Lounge, for servicemen, just like we have at Ellis Airport.
What about, what about providing some food opportunities? Is there some revenue opportunities there also?
There are certainly opportunities for that. As far as the servicemen go, generally, well, the way that it's approached with the USO, those are free things that are, but...
I understand, but if the USO, my thought was if the USA wasn't doing that, are you, are you looking at other, feeling that need? You know there's going to be some food needs there somewhere.
Well, we have vending machines right now, but that may not be the ultimate solution that we, that we end up with. That's certainly something that we can explore along the line. You know, we're, we're learning and planning every single day, so I think both of those are great feedback. We'll also have to furnish that area as well, so we may be looking for certain donations from the community. I don't think that we can justify FTA money to buy a Playstation or whatever those guys do these days, but there's certainly amenities that we may consider having there for them.
You know, we could have a food truck sit out there. We'd have to make an exception to the UDO, though.
I'm not going to touch that one. Come on, how about that? So, but, but to get back to what I was saying before, and also what we were talking about right here, for every dollar that we're able to generate through other revenue, that's going to help to drive down the general fund obligation. And as I've said many, many times here, you know, the, our, one of the primary things that we try to accomplish with transit is leveraging as much as we possibly can with, you know, the minimal actual cash outlay for us. And I think Jacksonville Station is a testament to that, because just as a reminder, and for the folks at home, DOT and FTA are paying 100% of the construction cost of that facility. That's a, that's a $10 million building that we're not putting any cash on. So we've been pretty successful with that so far. All right, if there are no questions on the revenue and expenses, I'm just going to wrap up here with some next steps. So as I mentioned before, some of these uncertainties are going to become more clear and more focused over time. The budget that I've shown you today, we feel is pretty solid, but there will be a process of calibration as we move forward into May and June. The numbers may change a little bit, but I don't anticipate that they would change a lot. Of course, the lease agreements and the acceptance date, that's all going to factor into what the ultimate budget is going to be as well. We're going to continue to work and track on those things. But one of the things that we would really like to get feedback from, feedback on, and guidance from the council on, is the, the need to potentially advance hire some of our customer service specialists. As I mentioned to you, if the intent is to bring the customer service in-house, the contract with Onslow United Transit ends July 1. And so in order for us to prepare for that, we would need to advance hire some of the employees this fiscal year so that we can recruit, onboard, train, and have that transition occur seamlessly from June 30 to July 1.
What are we paying outs for, for customer service?
Excuse me?
What are, what are we currently paying outs for this customer service?
I don't have an exact number for you, but it's approaching $100,000.
And what do they, what do they do for $100,000?
They answer the phones and provide, you know, feedback to all of our, to our passengers. They also provide all the other, you know, web capabilities that help with scheduling trips and things of that nature.
Does that include them providing space for the MV operation?
Yes, that's a good point, it sure does. So part, part of, we have two contracts, so, and I say MV all the time as well, but the one contract is with Onslow United Transit for One Call Center and our Paratransit. Okay, Paratransit is door-to-door transportation that we have to provide for folks with disabilities. The other contract is with First Transit, and those are the folks that actually drive the buses on our routes. The One Call Center contract has payments in it or an amount in it that purchases space for our fixed drought contractor to operate out of. It seems counterintuitive, but it's something that's evolved over time. And once we get into Jacksonville Station, that will no longer be the case. Outs will be paying us, you know, the $50,000 or so to lease our space. And then we will provide First Transit space within the building as well. So I think to get where you're going is, there is a cash outlay that we have right now associated with the One Call Center, as well as this space that Ron mentioned, that is going to be moved from a contracted service to in-house operations to help reduce the new obligation for customer service. So it's money that's already being spent, that we're just going to change the way that we spend it. And to me, I feel that there's more value added. Nothing against outs, but I think providing the customer service as city employees on behalf of the city is our best route forward.
Anthony?
Sir?
How's our, how's our free ridership program working out?
Well, ridership is phenomenal, actually.
It has picked up a lot, hasn't it?
Well, I don't have the exa, well, let's see, can I recall the exact numbers? This, this past month was the highest ridership that we've ever had.
You're talking about this month, July?
January was.
I mean, January, excuse me.
Yes, sir, January.
Don't know what part of the year I'm in right now. But January was a heavy, actually, after the holidays and everything, it picked up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, ridership has been very high, so I'm trying to recall the numbers. It's somewhere, I think, around 18,000 to 19,000 passengers a month. Typical is around 14. As I mentioned to some of you during the break, the Marine Corps ridership or our express ridership doubled last month. And, and I think it's good, it's a good service, not only provided to the folks in, on the civilian side of our community, but also the Marine Corps side. Because my understanding is those numbers jumped because some of those folks were just released from quarantine, you know? They've been locked down for a period of time. And while they can't leave the base, this gives them an opportunity to be able to go to different places on the base without having to spend $20, $30, $40 for a taxi ride.
I was wondering if my fellow council members would be okay with extending this free ridership for at least another month and see how it goes. What do you think about that, Dr. Wood?
The, the current free ridership program has been extended by you and the council on a number of occasions. It's currently scheduled to expire on February 28. Certainly, if this is something that council feels is appropriate. The funding that would, that would, let me say it differently. Mr. Bittner used the term revenue. The revenue from the fare box would automatically be replaced because it's eligible as a CARES Act federal funding. So there's no financial issue relative to the city extending this. So I think from the staff standpoint, Anthony, do you see any reason why the council shouldn't do this?
No, sir, we continue to monitor expenditures of the CARES money that was given to us, and there is adequate funding available, but we'll keep you updated on that as that progresses as well.
What we would recommend is that you do it just one month at a time. So if you do feel this is a good idea tonight, then we would appreciate direction that the, a free ridership program would continue through the end of March.
Good with that? So moved.
So I do have to say a word on behalf of the passengers. They are very, very appreciative of what we're doing. And the ridership shows that, but when we're able to talk to them, they also express their gratitude.
A lot of people are dependent on it, have become dependent on it. It's good for economic development purposes, getting some of these young military folks into town, you know, cheaply, and allowing them to spend their hard-earned money in the city, enjoy the things that we have to offer here. So I think it's a good idea.
And sir, we are, we are in the era of COVID. We're trying to do this as safely as we possibly can.
What kind of measures have you taken as far as safety on the transit buses?
We, we've installed shields to protect the drivers. The drivers wear PPE gear, they're of course required to. Passengers are now, because of the recent CDC guidance and the executive order from the president, they are actually required to wear a mask now. Before, we couldn't refuse service for not wearing masks, but now they are. Other things that we've done, we've increased the frequency of sanitizing the buses. And we've also promoted social distancing on the buses by banding off some of the seats. It's very difficult to get six feet between people on a, on a bus, but we strive to get as much space as we possibly can. I'm sure there's some other things that I've forgotten, but those are the things off the top of my head.
Got a question about the, the construction. Have you made a decision whether we're going to be able to reroute the road to lineup with the other one across the street?
We're getting the proposals very, very soon. In fact, during the last progress meeting, they were, they had some final questions before they were able to actually provide us the proposal. Anticipate the proposal maybe next week, two weeks from now, and then we will make a decision. But it's looking favorable, and I'm not sure if we're going to bring that back to council for consideration before we actually do it, but I, I think this is, you know, it's a great addition to the contract. And another thing too, it's come up several times about the condition of Market Street, the, the road that actually goes behind Shiloh Church and connects back over to Bell Fork Road. The engineering division here has done a great job for us in designing a resurfacing project for that. So not only is it going to strengthen the road, but it's also going to elevate some spaces, some areas to prevent flooding, also add some ADA accommodations. That's a good way for us to infuse some FTA money into the repaving program.
When do you expect to be able to know the cost of realignment?
I would say middle of this month.
Okay, and then once the cost and assist an estimate, that's not a firm price?
It is, it will be a proposal. So we, we can go to change order based upon that proposal. Or we could choose to negotiate depending on how the cost comes out, but...
Well, if it's a change order amendment, normally that would not come back to you. But what we will certainly do, assuming that it's favorable, we will report that to you in one of the weekly management reports.
Sounds like a plan. If there are no more questions, that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Anthony.
It's only 45 minutes. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Oh, the mic?
I can't see Dr. Washington.
Oh, which one?
Oh, you're blocking, okay. Before we have our one-city moment, I'm going to ask our city attorney to give us a little bit of an update on the census, what we've come to learn there.
Yes, sir.
I want to see Dr. Washington. Mr. Jackson, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. This is a special report on the 2020 census and ward redistricting. This is a developing story, more information will follow. I was hoping to get a smile out of you because I think maybe some of the stuff I'm going to tell you here in a moment, you're not going to smile as broadly when I finish my report. Let's talk just a moment about what the census, of course, you know what the census is. Glenn was here and he, you know, that is your population in 2010. And that is a gross population, but again, below that, there's a lot of data that will be coming from the census eventually. And so from that, with four wards, it is, as Mr. Bittner's pointed out before, is one person, one vote. That means that each ward therefore has to have an equal, relatively equal, we'll talk about that in a moment, equal population, because each ward is represented. Now, I'm going to go over with you just a simplistic sample. If you had 400 people in a town or a city, and you had four wards, then the ideal would be 100 in each ward, that's your 400 people. Of course, the ideal is rarely reached. The law allows you to have a variation. That variation is a plus five or a minus five. So in this little example, you could have in Ward 1, 98 people, in Ward 2, 101 people, in Ward 3, 102 people, in Ward 4, 99 people. That would be your 400 people. Or you could move those numbers around as long as you didn't vary over 5% and you equaled the total of 400, okay? Now, of course, that's not Jacksonville. But I think you see from that example, and you, 5% of 100,000 people, which we're not expecting to be at 100,000 population, as you know, in the past it's not been that high. But that's 5,000 people. When you have to take that and you have to work it in the ward system, then you have, again, a very small number of people that you can move around as far as trying to get each ward to be equal or within that 5-plus or 5-minus percent figure. In the last couple of weeks, Richard and I have attended virtually a student of government redistricting seminar. The mayor and Ron have attended virtually a mayor's, Metro Mayor's meeting, who had a consultant there to talk on this topic. And in the, in between those two meetings, Ron talked with Bob Coats of the North Carolina, who's the North Carolina Census Director. And this is what we've been told so far, and this is, again, estimates, that the gross data, that is what your population in Jacksonville is, you should get that about March of 2021. That your block data, and that's what you have to have to do the analysis that I was just talking about there with my little example of 400, that that will not come probably until July. And the consultant, as I understood from the mayor and from Ron, said it's more likely to be September of 2021. So what does this mean? Well, it means, number one, you cannot have an election, a municipal election, until you have the wards redistricted and this balance and so forth comes into play. I wanted to go over with you just a moment here and talk about, this is my third redistricting, talk about what's happened in the last two. In 2010, some of you were here with me, and you know in 2010... And you know, in 2010, we got the data in. You put together a committee, and I've got those members, Ernie Wright, Tiffany Burgess Chance, Homer Spring, Bob Warlick, Robert Sandy. And you task them, of course, Glenn Harkett being the primary leader of that. And they went and they took these little blocks, data blocks, census blocks, and they came up with a redistricting, working toward having the minority, the minority majority wards, one and four. And that's what we'd be working for again in this particular situation. No problem, election occurs in July of 2011. Or at least you file, excuse me, you file in July and you had the election in November. That's not exactly what happened in 2001. In 2001, you had just been through the 2000 census. In 2001, we hired a consultant to work with me and Glenn, and that, his name is now retired, Mike, Michael Cruel of Therrington Smith, the law firm. He came down here on June twenty-seventh, 2001, gave us a presentation to council. And at that time, this is what the problem was, or at least what the minutes reflect. He says the redistricting process must be completed following the federal census every ten years and prior to the next municipal election, and that is a must. Districts need to be similar to each other in total population, usually the population is reported by the Census Bureau. A peculiar problem in Jacksonville is that part of the city is included in the military base. The initial census data reported did not detail necessary, necessary information to determine the population of the ward. Instead of small census blocks, the Census Bureau created huge blocks with large population counts. One of those blocks reported more than twelve thousand persons, and that block was divided between two wards. And so it was therefore impossible to determine the population of the two wards without knowing the detail in the sub-blocks of that larger block. At that time, I'm just giving you some facts here. The population came back at sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixteen. The minutes reflect that the ideal population for each ward was sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine people. That year, this is what occurred. We don't know what occurred this year. But in that year, the North Carolina Legislature, and this is what the minutes read, the legislature had delayed the filing period to July twenty-third, 2001, for cities that need to redistrict. Of course, there, that did not help in this situation. What the council had to do that year pursuant to statute that's still in effect is they passed a resolution delaying the election. So when is the election delayed to and when was it delayed to then? Well, it's delayed till, of course, next year, you know, you have your county commissioners' elections. You've got those elections coming up. It's delayed till the time of the primary for the county commissioners. Now, in the old time, in the world that I lived in, you filed in January, you had a primary in May, and if you needed a second primary, it was in June. And then you had your general election in November. All that's out the window. Call the Board of Elections, they don't know, this all comes down from Raleigh. What happened in this was the, the election was delayed until the following year. That would have been 2002. The election occurred in September of 2002. And remember, at this time, we didn't have the four-year staggered terms. Everybody got elected every two years. And they took office, the mayor and the six council members took office in October of 2002. Their term was only good until the Ju-, excuse me, July of 2003, they would have filed again for an election in November of 2003. Now, that's just the history. But based upon that and based upon the data that Richard, Ron, and the mayor and I let each of them speak to it, there appears, and we want you to know upfront, I mean, as soon as we know stuff, we want you to know. We don't know what we'll get, when we'll get it. But it looks like at this point in time, there is going to be a possibility, a good probability, that the municipal elections this year will be delayed. If they are delayed, number one, in the June timeframe, whenever we can get that data, depending on what the legislature does now, of course, they could delay it a couple of weeks, but it doesn't sound like that's going to help us a lot. Because even after we get the information, and first of all, we got to get the right information, and you got to have your IT folks or your GIS folks, I should say, look at it. You may even need to get a consultant, a demographer and so forth. And y'all put in the budget ten thousand dollars for this year, and we're going to not spend it, but again, carry it over to next year to see who we need to hire, if anyone, to help us there. But in addition to that, you have to have the public input. Now, it's no requirement, but in the past, y'all have always had a committee that looked at this just like you did in 2011. And my recollection is, and I'll have to look at the minutes to see, but I think you even had a public hearing. But I think it's important in doing the minority majority wards that you have a committee because this gets down into, to be very detailed work, looking at, does this census block belong in Ward four? Does it have minority representation there, or should we leave it over here in Ward two? And I will tell you, in 2011, the council authorized and said, basically, because you had such a hard time keeping the minority majority wards because we are an integrated community. You had such a hard time that any new annexation should go in Ward two and Ward three. Let's keep those with the, there so that, and so forth. But again, what I wanted to share with you today is that don't put your fees, don't save that fifteen dollars or whatever. You might not need it in July, but you hopefully need it maybe next year. But again, it appears at this point, and we'll keep you updated as more information comes to us. But it appears at this point that there's a good chance. And you ask why? Well, I don't know why, but I can tell you one, a couple of things that come to my mind. Number one, you, when you have a change in administration, there is a significant change in personnel in the Census Department. You know that on the national level, if you keep up with the news, that there was a case that went Supreme Court about undocumented persons and whether they should count toward the census or not. Now, the Supreme Court punted on that and said, I don't think we're ready to decide that. But these are things, whether it affects us and probably that one doesn't, but it affects the census of the whole United States. So we're probably not going to get an answer until they got exactly the data and the information they want. Our concern about having an election in July is not their first concern. They want to get it in a way that, that they want it to be. But probably the, the change in administration is a significant factor in that. Again, you can see what I've just read from you from 2001, there wasn't, I can't remember back. I guess there was a change, I don't know what the administration was. But the data that the, the city council and staff received was just not the data that was needed to do the evaluation, to do the, the adjustment of the wards. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions, but I wanted to go ahead and give you that heads up. And I'm glad that you're still smiling even at the end of my report. Thank you, Mayor. I think Dr. Wood wants to say something.
Before you, that's a lot to digest. The official census in 2010 was seventy thousand, one hundred and forty-five people. All of us know that probably in 2018, nineteen, and twenty, we haven't had a lot of growth in the city. I would ask you to reflect back though to 2011, 2012, 2013. I would remind you of the phenomenal apartment complex development that occurred in Ward two and three. The phenomenal single-family home development that occurred in Ward two and three. It would not surprise me at all to see our official population from 2010, which was seventy thousand, one hundred and forty-five, to be somewhere in the vicinity of seventy-eight thousand people. Now, if you go back and look at what you adopted in 2011, that was the basis of your current wards, almost each ward was at seventeen thousand, eight hundred people. Some were a little higher, some were a little lower. Think of this. If we have to spread, let me start that differently. If the population is eight thousand people more, then we have to spread those eight thousand people equally in those four wards. As John said, you can't say, well, the population in Ward one is going to stay at seventeen thousand, eight hundred, but the population in Ward three is going to go to twenty-four thousand. So what I'm saying to you is this. Your geographic boundary has enlarged. Your population has enlarged. When we get the data in, whenever that is, don't be surprised, Dr. Washington, that your ward is going to have to go up in size because it's going to have to go up in population. Why is that? There hasn't been a lot of new development in your ward. But to create the one man, one vote, your ward geographically is going to have to enlarge. We have Mr. Jackson on the phone. Mr. Jackson, don't be surprised that Ward one is going to change in its boundary. Again, you haven't had a lot of new growth in Ward one. But in order to have one man, one vote, geographically, Ward one is going to have to enlarge. On the other hand, Mr. Bittner, Ward two, tremendous amount of growth in Ward two. But you can't keep all that growth. Therefore, it is logical that your geographic boundary is actually going to shrink. So some people who have voted in Ward two since 2011 will probably find themselves in some other ward. And let's look at Ward three, the same thing. A lot of growth in Ward three because of Williamsburg and the apartment complexes and the single-family home. So again, it is logical, Ward three will be reduced in geographic size. All of this said, as John has eloquently stated, heads up, going to be a lot of change. We have no clue on the schedule though, other than this. It is very, very unlikely that we are going to have the data that we need to do redistricting in March. Most likely, as John said, what we're going to get is your gross number. It may be a week after that. It may be months after that before we actually know the block data that we have to use in order to then disperse the population and come up with the new ward boundaries. So that's where we are. Mr. Carter, do you want to correct anything I said?
Yes, sir.
I have no idea when block information will become available.
The mayor and, and Ron had the last conversation that was with the Metro Mayors, and their consultant mayor said it was, his prediction was September, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Again, this is just guesstimation.
This is not a Jacksonville thing, this is a.
It's not.
Nationwide.
Aware thing.
Nationwide.
Yes, ma'am.
How was the committees decided?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, we couldn't hear you, go ahead.
I said, in the past, how did you decide who was on that committee?
It was a council decision, the council appointed the committee. If this is, the council can do it any way you want to do it, but I think you definitely, you need public input. The, and that would be a council decision. If you want to have a committee or you want to, if you want to follow that same protocol, and who would be on it, but that would be whoever the council decided to be on the, on the committee. Dr. Washington, did you have a question?
In terms of looking at the, the information you provided, particularly looking at the possibility that wards two and three may have to shrink in their sizes or their redistricting may cause some of those citizens to be placed in Ward one and Ward four. My question is that based upon the, that population, based upon our population, with the current council with four wards and two at large, could, what act would it take if we wanted to increase the size of our council so that you could maintain your minority majority?
Well, let me say a couple of things. Number one, I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know that it's the good time to begin that process at this point in time. But don't get too far ahead.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just.
Yeah. One of the things you have to consider is what effect on the census did the pandemic, if any, what effect it have? There's a lot of folks that may say it's going to, if anything, keep you at the same numbers even though your population may have grown. Of course, Glenn worked so hard and the, finally got the counting aboard the base, the folks in the, the housing and so forth. What effect does that have and different things of that nature? We can certainly look into that, but that's going to take a voting lawyer to, to give us a process to move forward with that. But at this point in time, unless council gives us a different direction, once we get that data, our goal would be to continue to have minority majority Ward one and four. Even having that, if you look, and I can share this with you, the 2011, you will see that, and I have it right here, the meeting that the council had, let me hold on a moment. This chart right here. This chart right here says that you have around seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine in Ward one, seventeen thousand, four sixty-seven in Ward two, seventeen thousand, eight forty-seven in Ward three, and seventeen thousand, five forty-two in Ward four with a total of seventy thousand, one forty-five. But it's interesting to note that you have here in Ward one, black only, three thousand, three hundred and ninety-three. And then we have a other, other category of thirteen thousand and so forth. You have black only of nineteen sixty-three, but it gives you the total. But when you look at the total number here, your number, you know, it, it's not exactly saying that there's over fifty percent black in that particular ward. Again, it's the, you know, but I'll be, I'll, I'll scan this and send this to council. You can review it and draw whatever conclusion you might want to draw from it.
Let me make a comment on that. You will recall that there are two sections that the city has been under for a long time in the federal laws. It's come referred to as section two and section five. Section five was the preclearance. Section five had to do with any changes that we made and so forth had to be submitted for preclearance by the federal government. That's no longer applicable because of the Supreme Court ruling. On the other hand, in my non-legal opinion, my reading of everything says this. If you move from four wards to five wards, you'll be back in front of the federal government and you will be postponing a lot of things. I would say to you, stay away from any consideration of going to more wards. It will complicate this thing dramatically. Now, we can get better interpretations on that. Your best thing is to stay exactly like you are and to draw those boundaries where they continue to encourage minority population, minority pop, minority possibility of being elected in wards one and four. But I will say to you, those wards are going to get bigger. Now, may I see that chart for just a second, John?
Yes, sir.
One of the interesting things is if you look at the 2010 numbers. Here, you know, keep in mind, we've drawn them so that it is minority wards. But let's look at the real numbers. In 2010, Ward one had nineteen point six percent black only. Their term, not mine, just reading the black, not African-American. Nineteen point six. Ward two had twenty point nine. Ward three had nineteen point zero. Ward four had twenty point six. When you look at the numbers, it's not as if wards one and Ward four were fifty percent African-Americans and wards two and Ward three were only ten percent African-Americans. As John started his, his comment, and as we all know, Jacksonville is the most integrated city you'll find anywhere. Why? Because of who we are, the home of the Marines and sailors. I remember talking to the committee when Glenn and the committee finished their work, and I believe I made the same comment in front of y'all when you adopted this that first year I was here. Creating these boundaries because we are so integrated is going to become more and more and more difficult. And that's why I say, look at the actual percentages of black only in all four wards. Well, guess what? Ward two technically has more African-Americans in it than Ward one or Ward four. We got a lot of challenges ahead. We got a lot of challenges ahead, folks.
Let me give a little bit of legal clarity to what Dr. Woodruff said.
It's probably a good idea, John, thanks.
There's the Voting Rights Act. Protects everybody's right, but one person, one vote. Section Five of that act required every time there was an annexation, didn't matter if it was half dozen lots in a subdivision, even commercial property. The clerk here had to send that to the Department of Justice and get it, quote, "pre-cleared" before it would become effective. That section, Section Five, was abolished, or this is what, on June 25th, 2013. The United States Supreme Court held that it is unconstitutional to use the coverage formula in a particular section of the Voting Rights Act to determine which jurisdictions are subject to the preclearance requirement of Section Five of the Voting Rights Act. There were 40 counties in North Carolina that had, under this act, had been put under this act. And Onslow County was one of those counties. The court did away with the formula. And they said to the legislature, to the Congress, this formula doesn't work anymore. If you want a new formula, then you need to come up with a new formula, and we'll see if it meets the test. But they basically said that that did away with any preclearance. And so since 2013, our clerk here has not been sending, and has, is not required by law to send, anything to the Department of Justice to have it precleared to make sure. Now, what did it mean by preclearing? It meant that we weren't doing something to diminish the minority-majority wards, that the annexation process and what wards we put these annexations in was doing something to diminish those wards and the voting rights there. Section Two is still the law. And basically, Section Two prohibits any practice or procedure that discriminates on the basis of race, color, or membership in one of several languages. But most of the cases under that have come up, even, have come up in situations where there is challenges to a large election system. But I hope that clarifies. But, and you may be, Dr. Washington, or you, Mr. Jackson, may be familiar with that 2013 case. I don't know. But again, we just wanted, the purpose of tonight was not as much to get in the weeds as maybe we've gotten into the weeds, because we don't know what the numbers are going to be. Until we know the numbers and we get this data from the census blocks, those small things. But we wanted to prepare you and to share with you the fact that there's a better-than-50% chance that the municipal elections for 2021 will be delayed. But again, that will be delayed by y'all by a resolution. But again, you don't have a choice. If we don't have the information to do the analysis, et cetera, et cetera, and to get all approved before, unless the legislature changed the filing date, which y'all know better than I do, it happens in July of this year. If they don't do something there, then y'all will have to pursue it to this statute, do a resolution and delay it. And that will put it over into 2022, whenever the county commissioners have their, their primary. Whenever the Board of Elections tells them that is what they shall do.
Attorney Carter.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson.
Isn't it possible that the base numbers had grown as well in terms of within those wards?
Oh, yes, sir, we don't know. We just don't know. That's why I'm saying we shouldn't get too far ahead of ourselves. The purpose was not to get into the numbers, because we don't have the numbers. The purpose of my little short, yet coming along, presentation was to say, I want to, my councilors know what I know, and all I wanted to tell them tonight is, there's a good chance that the municipal elections will not occur this year, but there's a good chance they may have to be delayed. But again, just letting them know upfront, y'all upfront.
One more question. In the future, if there's any meetings concerning redistricting, can you make sure Dr. Washington and I know about those?
There have been no meetings, and we certainly wouldn't have any meetings with anyone besides y'all other than Dr. Woodruff and I, and Ron, and the mayor going to them. But there's, there's been no meetings with anyone in reference.
Well, what I'm, what I would like, what I'm saying is that, because you all got additional information based on where you went in terms of these conferences or, or meetings?
Yes, sir.
What, correct?
Yes, sir, the Zoom meetings, the School of Government meetings, and, and the mayor and Ron attended a, virtually a mayor's metro, metro meeting. Yes, sir.
But let me clarify. Any information that we get of invitations will be extended to all city council members. That's the way we operate. So certainly honor your request, sir. But we will extend that to the mayor and all seated council members. Then you can decide if you want to attend. These have been virtual meetings, and I would anticipate that's how it's going to continue.
Okay, and I understand that it's to all, but I, I know our wards are definitely affected. I apologize for not saying the entire council, but I, I just wanted to make sure in the future, when those meetings do occur, virtual, whatever, that we are able to attend those.
You will all be invited.
Yes.
I think the bottom line comes down to a potential schedule. I can tell you from the amount of work that it took in 2010 that unless we have the block data in here no later than the end of March, the middle of April, you're going to have to pass a resolution at that point. Again, John, correct me. The normal filing date for city council elections is the first 10 days or something like that in July? Is that correct?
That's close enough, yes, sir. It's in July.
That's for those that file, because you do have some that run as a write-in candidate.
Yes, ma'am. So backdating, if we need 90 days to do this, June, May, April? John's done an excellent job of giving you an overview. Any other questions you have of us on this?
We'll keep everybody posted.
Yes, sir.
Comes across. I know that with the National League of Cities, I'm sure that y'all, there's been some talk from that organization.
I have a board of directors meeting on Thursday.
Okay, you'll probably hear about it there, too, with all, at all probability. It's that big of an issue everywhere.
Mayor, you ready for your one-city moment?
I'm ready. Oh, yeah, we had Groundhog Day today, by the way. We had Possumwood Puck from Possumwood Acres join us along with, gosh, I can't remember what the young lady's name was that actually came out from the, from the sanctuary there. You know, they, they get these animals, they get these animals that have been injured and nurture them back to health. Puck here, he's been around there for about four years now. He's, he, he came to him as about a yearling, a year old. And as much as I don't believe in the fact that groundhogs are that accurate, well, they're probably more accurate than the actual weather people, to be honest with you. He saw his shadow. I tried, I tried to, I tried to block it, the sun, as much as I could, you know, considering I don't want to see six more weeks of winter. But he did see his shadow today, and he's cute as a button. But, you know, we have Puck here, you know, they have Sir Walter Wally up in Raleigh. And then you have Punksel Tony Phil, who also saw his shadow in Pennsylvania this morning. And I don't know, I wouldn't put away my snow boots yet. It's a great possibility he could be right this year. But it's, next year, hopefully, we'll be back at school. This was done virtually normally, and actually, the little, little groundhog there, he came out of his, his little hooch there and walked around the fence. I think he was looking for the children. He just weren't there. And usually, when we have Groundhog Day, you know, there's a lot of interaction between the kids and the, and the Puck there. So hopefully, next year, we'll be back at the school and celebrate our Groundhog Day ritual there. So can I get, if anybody doesn't have anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. Okay.